Welcome to this May 26 meeting of the Milton Planning Court. I'm the senior member, Alex Whiteside, and I will be serving as chairman for this meeting. And with me are--
Peter Jackson, member.
And Ed Duffy, member.
Can I call again, secretary?
No, we will be joined shortly by the town planner. Members Innes and Lynch are not going to attend this meeting. But we plan to accomplish a great deal notwithstanding. So the first thing we're going to do is look at the minutes of April 14th, which look to me to be dynamite. What do you think, Ed?
I have no comment.
They went over them about three different times in New Coast.
They did.
Okay.
So that's why they look like dynamite.
I'd like to move approval of the minutes of April 14th as written.
All right, Ed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes of April 28th. My comments are similar to what my comments for the last minutes were.
Mine too. I have no proposed changes.
All right, so we will--
I move approval of the minutes of April 28th.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we get to the minutes of May 12th. And--
Likewise, I find them to be excellent.
Okay, Ed?
I move the minutes of May 12th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our next meeting will be June 9th, and then we're going to meet on the 23rd. Now, citizens speak. Citizens speak gives an opportunity for citizens to be heard by the board on matters that are not being heard in public hearing and which pertain to the board or its duties or its guests.
It couldn't bother us.
I don't know, does it bother anyone? Can anyone not hear? So far, so good?
Okay.
Yeah, it's too short on the audio.
Okay, so is it drowning us out?
Not drowning, but it's--
Well, maybe we can turn it off.
Here we can probably turn it off.
We are underground. So we've got a lot of--
That's right, Pete, on the table, there's a little controller right here on the table.
On the table, Pete, on the table. All right, this is--
Yep, I think so.
We don't want the video, or the sound with the video to be distorted. Okay, now, citizens speak, what citizens would like to speak? Ah, here is a citizen. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Margaret Donovan, 51 Central Avenue. And I'm disappointed that Paul Sullivan isn't here to hear what I am informing the board. On Monday, this Monday, at 6:59 a.m., I received an email from Paul Sullivan telling me that the contractors were going to be there starting today, Monday, to dig up the street and would be there for several days. I want to call attention to the fact that both the Board of Appeals and this board conditioned the permit for the increase in height on the condition that a point person would be appointed to mitigate construction activities on nearby properties and to deal directly and responsibly with the butters and nearby citizens during the construction of the project. That language came from the Board of Appeals in their meeting in March 2010, and it was incorporated into the special permit granted by this board on May 28th, 2010. I do not believe that informing me nine minutes before the construction was going to begin on a Monday morning was in compliance with the rules of this special permit. And then he asked me to notify the rest of the neighbors. I knew by 10 minutes of 7:00 that the construction was going to begin there today because all the trucks were lined up there. Mr. Kennedy from K&amp;K was there at 6:20. So I sent Paul an email, a return email. "Paul, this is hardly advanced notice. Sabre Tree is coming today to spray my hemlocks, and I fully expect that they will be accommodated." Hi, Margaret. Yes, I'm sure we can accommodate them. Next email from me to Paul. "Mass irrigation is turning my sprinkler system on this Thursday between 8:00 and 12:00. I'm assuming that they will be accommodated as well." Replied from Paul, "Yes, hopefully the work should be completed before then." K&amp;K were there 15 hours on Monday, 7:00 to 10:00. I went to the officer on duty, and I told him about the emails between me and Paul Sullivan, who is the point person for the construction of 36 Central. I asked him, I said, "This truck, this Sabre Tree goes in front of the house and sprays the hemlocks in my backyard. Well, I can't put anybody in front of the house, it's all blocked off. Call Paul Sullivan." What a joke that was. Remember that I brought the attention of this board that I had previously tried to reach Paul Sullivan at the number on his letterhead down in Stoughton and was informed that it was turned off. So there's no way I was going to call Paul Sullivan unless I called them at his home. Wouldn't have mattered anyway. So I went across to Karan. Sabre Tree arrived. Karan helped me get out, not the police officer. Karan helped me to back out of my driveway with all this interference with all those trucks out there and bring it up the street. Of course, I just had it washed the day before, and where I parked it, they decided to spray their lawn with some of it, so that was all right, at least my car wasn't damaged. Now it's Karan, not the police officer, that's helping my Sabre Tree with this truck back into my driveway. And thank goodness for Karan, the poor man was going into the front side of my house. And if Karan hadn't yelled out when he had, then my house would have been hit while the police officer stood by it to one side and did nothing. At least I will say that the police officer, when my Sabre Tree man was leaving, he then came over and helped them in out. I asked him his name, and he said, "Lieutenant Collins." I said, "Well, I'm a taxpayer, well, an employee." His attitude was certainly not deserving of Milton Police reputation. So the next day, they were there from 7:00 to 9:00, yesterday, till 9:00. Today, because of the merchants, the merchants needing the business for the holiday weekend, at least K&amp;K, and my quarrel is not with K&amp;K, it's with Paul Sullivan. K&amp;K left at 4:30, and they will be gone for the weekend so that the poor merchants can now have parking because they were completely shut off from School Street down to the village. So today was mass irrigation, put my sprinkler system on. I will say that the police that have come since then have been very, very helpful, but once again, I was inconvenienced and had to remove my car and have this man back in. I will say, the police officer today did help. Nine minutes before the construction was to begin is not what this meant in your special permit. And had I known that, and Karan and I had discussions, I perhaps would have been able to have them come earlier, last week maybe, but we received no timetable of when they were going to be there. I don't know, I know that they've already dug up the street once because that's when the weight from my clocks fell down, that's when the car was hit. I do not know if they've finished, whether it's the water, the gas, today, this week, it was today or this week, sewer. So I think it's up to this board to find out from Paul Sullivan, since he is the point person, what more is going to be done to inconvenience the neighborhood. And I mean the neighborhood, because those merchants lost all those parking spaces for four days this week. Where's Paul?
Well, he should be here very soon.
Well, I am requesting that when you get to his issue, that you inform him of what this means, what it means.
I think you're right, it means that you get notice.
And not--
Real notice.
And not nine minutes before.
Nine minutes is not notice.
Right. Of course, Karan and Michael Moore, they have done a tremendous job, they've been there six days a week, minimum, 10 hours a day, working on that project, and I mean working. And so they were concerned, because I told them I was coming tonight, "Oh, you know, please don't." It's not you, it's not you that I'm criticizing. It's not the construction of the project. I'm criticizing the lack of notification.
All right, we will tell the point person, if the point person arrives. Is the point person going to come up?
He's due.
He is overdue.
Yes, he is.
6:40 is when he is due to speak. But while we await the point person, we're going to hear from Mr. Sandquist. The point person has just arrived.
That's my answer.
Who else is coming for you, Paul? All right, why don't you come up and take a seat? Because we'll-- Now, we've just heard that you did some roadwork this week, and that you gave notice of approximately nine minutes to Ms. Donovan that you were going to do the roadwork, and she suggests that that was inadequate notice. So what do you have to say about that?
Well, I believe that at the last meeting in this room, I specifically brought it up during the end of the hearing, that the sewer work was going to start very soon. And I'm not sure. They worked long days in order to get it done as few a days as possible.
Well, I mean, they started Monday, right?
Yes, 13 feet down--
No, I understand that, but when did you know that they were going to start Monday?
I knew they were going to stop today in the week, and I didn't know if it was Monday until late in the weekend.
Late in the weekend. Well, you really, as soon as you knew that, you should have gone on your email. Yes, Mr. Clark?
Actually, at the last meeting, what he said was that it was going to start the next Monday. What happened was, DPW put off by a week because of the review of that permit. So it was supposed to have started the week before, not last week. He actually said it in the last meeting. He was here Thursday, he said it was to start the beginning of the week, so then that Monday. It got pushed off by DPW because of issues with, it is 13 feet down, it is an active line.
I understand that, you know, I understand-- But the fact of the matter is that notice is required, and we want the neighbors to get notice as soon as maybe, when you know that something's going to happen.
I know about the dates because I made the same comments to the selectmen about the starting date, and was shocked that it was buffed by a week too, so.
But I think it would have been, you know, important that once it was found out when it was going to be, at least put some signs up on the poles or something, because the merchants, you know, didn't know, and the neighbors, and, you know, again, keeping in touch with people is very important because people's lives go in and out there, merchants depend on things for their business. I knew it was coming up too, and I can't tell you how many times I approached that intersection, you know, wanting to go straight and going, "Oh, no, I can't do that," you know, but that, you know, it's not too much for me, but it's a different thing for the merchants and things. So I think courtesy just, you know, demands a little better communication with the merchants and the neighbors and things like this.
All right, well, I think that a real commitment to, just keep in mind that when you know, you really got to share, because that's what the permit requires. And the permit does mean something. So we anticipate good notice, and--
Yes, I apologize for any disruption.
Okay.
Is that work in the street complete now? You know?
I think they got to go back after the holiday.
Right, but if they come back, we want to know when they're coming back. So tell K&amp;K Construction--
Sure. I'll check with them in the wadi, and I'll get in touch with Margaret and merchants.
Yeah, if they're planning on working Tuesday again, and if the street is going to be closed off, certainly, you know, let Margaret and the neighbors know and the merchants know.
Sure.
All right. Now, we have received, as you can see, Paul, there are only three of us. And it takes four votes to do a special permit, but we are going to discuss, I did draft a proposed decision. And the proposed decision basically says as follows. Well, it says more than basic, it does say as follows. "Applying the general standards for decisions set out in Section 1 of the zoning bylaw and the specific standard set out in Section 3 Subsection J, the Planning Court approves amendment of the amended special permit to require the following use of materials." And then I incorporated a list of materials provided to me by Chairman Innes. And so I am assuming that this is the correct formulation that I have here. But I want, if you would review it, Pete, that would be useful.
Yeah, I haven't gone, you know, back and forth between the written description and the drawings that were given.
Okay.
But I would be happy to do that if you wanted to.
Well, I think that someone should do it. I mean, I suppose, someone should do it. Why don't you do it? Well, you'll be the reviewer of this thing. I'm the author, you can be the reviewer. Applying, and then it's number two. "Applying the same standards, the Planning Court modifies the modified landscape plan-- No, the Planning Court approves the modified landscape plan as summary of modifications to site plan, called the modified plan, and requires that everything shown on the modified plan shall be constructed as shown. Any deviation, addition, or omission of what is shown on the modified plan shall not be permissible without prior written approval from the Planning Court." And we have a modified plan which was provided to us by the Hanukkah--
Yes, I've reviewed that, and it's consistent with what we talked about last week.
Okay. So I think that we're, and we'll give you a, we can't do it tonight, but I think that we will do it when we can do it.
When is the next meeting?
So I think that's about all we can say to you right now. I mean, we could upbraid you further about not giving Margaret better notice, but hopefully you've got the point. Anything else, board members?
No, I reviewed the draft that you prepared, and other than verifying the consistency between the written document and the drawings, I'm going through that now, and they do seem to be there. I think, I don't have any proposed changes to the amendment.
Okay, so we apologize for not being able to act on this because it really is, it is really ready to be acted on. And I congratulate everyone involved, including the citizens, for making this work. And let's get to the finish without any further problems. Okay, is that satisfactory? If you need us to have a special meeting to sign it, we'll do it.
Okay, it's going to be closed, but I think, I know they're supposed to stop the closings on 1st of July.
All right, well, let Mr. Clark know, because we can do a special meeting if, just for the purpose of signing this.
Okay.
And this draft will be available at the town engineer's office. I mean, the town--
Town planning's office. Does he know that?
He doesn't know that, but Diane, I think, can tell him. Bill? I said that if they have a problem, we will schedule a special meeting to sign this.
Yes.
And that it will be available at your office.
I'll actually hang it on the bulletin board--
I think hanging it on the bulletin board would be perfect.
Tomorrow.
Now we're going to hear from Mr. Sandquist, because I don't see that Mr. Sheffield has entered the room. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Eric Sandquist, and I'm the owner of the property at 610 Harlem Street, and I have Mr. Tuttel, the head of Tuttel from Royal Associates, to prepare the documentation that I submitted to Bill Clark for an A&amp;R approval at 610 Harlem Street. Do you want this in from you?
I've looked at it. It would appear that, and hopefully, that you want to have some sort of accessory structure on the new lot, or do you want to do another house there? I mean, is it a family situation, or are you really thinking of splitting up your estate into a small lodge?
I would say it's more of a state plan. And to be exactly specific at this time, it's a bit difficult. I have a large family, a lot of children, and to me, it seems about time in my life it's the time to put some things in, especially with respect to the project.
Well, it seems to me that you could easily put another house there, which would-- I'm sympathetic with what you've got already. And so I, and I've looked at the plan, and it is a little bit of a shock, but I'm sure that it's still, it makes it possible to put a dwelling there for a family member or indeed someone else.
Here's to be consistent with our zoning requirements for A&amp;R plan.
Well, I mean, the only thing is, the driveway is shown on the other lot, but I'm--
Presumably a new house--
It's shown on basically two other lots, and it's, you know, I--
But that's an existing driveway, should the lot not remain in the family, I'm sure a new driveway would be developed to serve the state building.
I think they're probably right. But it is, yes, Mr. Clark?
If the existing barn becomes an accessory structure, what did the new zoning just say about that? This is--
Oh, on the height of it?
On the height and the setback.
Well, this particular plan, until, the way I look at this, the way I look at this is that whatever happens, it's not until Mr. Sandquist actually conveys that lot out. In other words, he's still grandfathered even with the plan because he owns both lots.
Right.
And that, you know, if there's a problem with the barn, if at some point he transfers ownership of the lot, then that is something that will be addressed in the future. Because there's no, there will be no current issue, just by endorsing this plan doesn't change the title.
Right, and I know that you could turn the barn into a house, and you meet all the requirements. It's turning it into, leaving it as a barn, putting a house forward.
Well, no, but, okay, but even as an accessory structure, it's not within 30 feet of the rear lot line, so it still can be 35 feet tall. I mean, it's fine. I don't think that there's any problem with it as an accessory structure, but whatever.
No, I--
It can be turned into a house--
It could, I just didn't want to get tripped by what we just did.
No, I don't think that we've tripped it.
Okay.
So--
So I would move that we endorse this plan--
Why don't we make Mr. Clark, or do you want to endorse it yourself?
Well, we could vote to approve it, whether he signs it on our behalf or--
Well, we can actually sign it because Mr. Sheffield still hasn't arrived, even though he was scheduled 10 minutes ago. All right, let's see how we do on the vote. So we have a vote to--
Have motion to approve and endorse--
This plan is not requiring subdivision approval.
Right.
And do we have a second, Ed?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
It's an excellent plan.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so it's three votes in favor, we can now sign this.
Oh, I see why--
Did you have a question or a pen?
No, pen. Today is 5/26/11.
All right, done. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It can be simple.
It can be simple. Well, I think we, Mr. Tuttel of Merrill Associates did a very nice job on this.
Yeah, we have no, we, we think that you did do a nice job on that plan.
Thank you. Don't make any surprises.
Thank you, thank you. All right, now, we are fortunate to have the town planner here and available to give his report.
I've been dealing with wind turbine issues.
And we hope that you drag your report out a little bit.
I know you do, I know, I know. Under the wind turbine, I'm actually, I have to do some remapping for the D and P appeal. And the same appeal will go towards the, the motion to dismiss that was filed by Corey Hill, so all of it goes to D and P, back out to the courts, back to town council. Green Communities, the town received a hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred dollar grant to do improvements for energy savings and I'm dealing with the contract issues with Corret. We got the big check the other day. The East Milton parking study, we held last Wednesday, the third and final public meeting. The last three Wednesdays, we've actually done reviews of the draft final. The final came out this afternoon, just at five o'clock. That is the draft that goes to the selectmen for the, for the finish. Any editing to that particular document has to be done before the end of June. The Business and Citizen Advisory Committee...
Why not give a, one of the high points?
Just getting to that point right now. The Business and Citizen Advisory Committee has developed a suite of options that they're going to put forth to the selectmen. And they are put forth on a time schedule, zero to six months, zero to twelve months, zero to twenty-four months, and then they have a zoning piece that they expect wouldn't start for probably eighteen months plus to get it done. There also is a plus eighteen months portion that is to look at a new off-ramp off the expressway that would be up around exit eleven. Exit eleven, right now, you can come off the expressway and go to Dorchester, but you can't come back into Milton. The potential for that exit, exiting onto Granite Ave would alleviate some of the traffic that people get off, everybody right now has to get off at Granite Ave before the square, and it has the potential to clog up the square. If you're on the other side of town, you don't need to go through the square, you could use the new exit. The design of that would be coming much later, it's just, that's one of the long-term goals for the, for the report. One A is signage, wafer, wafer and, wafer signage and traffic markings and enforcement. Right now, when you look at the parking signs down in the square, there are two-hour signs, one-hour sign, half hour, fifteen minutes, and there's no real rhyme or reason as to where some of those signs are. There are actually parking signs that say nothing. They're a regular sign, you've got the red border, and there's no writing on the sign.
Is that because the...
I have no idea why.
Writing washed off?
I don't have any clue why.
Use watercolors or not?
Maybe, I don't know. One of the other big parts is the looking for enforcement. And the enforcement will actually address some of the cut-through traffic issues, enforcement will deal with the parking, that employees are parking in the right place, that customers aren't, or that users of the square parking are not leaving their car there for the day taking a bus into Boston. Then one B, one B is the so-called hybrid plan. Hybrid plan is to take Adams Street and close it off, take all the traffic and go around what is now the park on the deck. By doing that, it does improve the level of service for the traffic in, in that, in that area. It provides us with two parking lots, and each one of those parking lots is twenty-five cars, so we'd have fifty cars worth of parking on the deck proper. There still would be a green park in the middle, and there would be a slip ramp that already exists, it would stay there, that would be, allow you to come down Adams Street going east and be able to turn and go Granite Ave going north. The stones that are there for the fire department and the police department would stay in that area, they wouldn't be moved at all. We've taken this back through Mass Department of Transportation, we've taken it to Federal Highway, and so far, nobody has objected to it, they think that it's a, you know, a doable project. We've come up with costs and we're fine-tuning those costs, I'm sure they're going to be in the document, but I have not taken and read the document tonight. I know that the costs are going to be just north of a million dollars. We have the money through the federal appropriations, and we'll see how it goes. Under the zoning component, there are two pieces of zoning that would be, being looked for. One is to take the three houses on the south side of Bassett Street and turn those into commercially zoned properties. Right now, there's a fourth house in the back on Adams Court, it already is zoned commercial. Seeing that two out of the three houses on Bassett Street are already owned by the commercial buildings in the front, there's the potential that they could do something to improve their buildings or help with some additional parking. The other piece was a, using mechanic's, mechanic street and changing it into a professional development street, putting in a P U D for professional development offices on the first floor and allowing the residential to remain on the second floor. That's, those are the key components to the study. There will be no buying of people's houses, there's no acquisition, there's no taking, there's no taking any individual houses for the study. That's not one of the recommended options. And that's it.
Okay, I guess my only question would be, who determined that this, this traffic pattern would do a better job than what's there now? Because I certainly know that whenever I go into East Milton coming up Plaza Street Edge Hill, there is a, a long wait at that light, and if everyone is going around at the same time, I can, I foresee that is going to be a mess. So I hope that you've got a very, very good, solid traffic engineer who has said, no, 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 no.
Howitzstein Hudson has taken and modeled the square. They've, they've looked at it, they've turned the, the numbers over to, to the state, I don't know what kind of review the state is. I know that Mass Department of Transportation is reviewing it, they're giving a, an official opinion to the report.
But they don't really care.
As long as the, they do care.
As long as Granite Ave remains open and...
No, no, they, they care as long as level of service increases. That was their requirement, level of service must increase. And all the models show that it does increase. There's bike ways, pedestrian ways.
All right, well, we look forward to, to seeing this. Yes, Mr. Tuttel?
Um, Bill?
Yeah.
I'm down there every day.
Yep.
Of the walk down, walk back, bicycle through, I fly through and so forth all day long. I work there now too, as a matter, as a matter of fact. It seems to me that there's absolutely no traffic enforcement whatsoever, no presence of the, the police in the area whatsoever. And it seems to me that the best experiment we could do down there is to get the signs straightened out, get the zones straightened out, what the different parking requirements are, and then have strict enforcement and see, and I think you'll see a drastic difference down here of available parking and less congestion on the street and so forth. So it seems to, well, it seems to me that the sensible way for us is to enforce the laws fully eight hours a day and then see, go from there, see what we need beyond that. I think that might be enough, just to get the traffic, the parking straightened out and the track, all the law, various laws enforced. So take that to the board.
Actually, the consultant has said that the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee and the neighbors don't necessarily agree with that, but that was one of Howitzstein Hudson's original observations for the square. What I would like to do is say, to review any and all the documents for the study, for the, you know, I, please visit the project's website, eastmiltonsquarestudy.com. EastmiltonSquareStudy.com. It's every, all of the different plans are there, all the minutes for all the meetings are there, all the discussion that took place at those meetings, if anybody's seen any of the minutes that have been put forth for the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee, it's pretty close to verbatim, what you said gets put down. Nate, who works for Howitzstein Hudson, does a great job with the minutes. The full discussion takes place in those minutes.
Bill? Do you anticipate that the Board of Selectmen will just accept the study and say thank you, or do you expect them to endorse the plan? Here we are.
I have no idea. I would actually like them to endorse the plan and take under advisement which options they want to take and move forward. But that's the next step, is for them to take that suite of options and agree to pursue one or all or some, and we can move forward and spend the rest of that money.
All right.
Implement the plan.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Sheffield, you can see that there are only three members. And you are involved in a special permit, a site plan approval. Okay, okay, all right. Why don't you come up and we'll discuss it?
I am fortunate to be here tonight on behalf of Milton Gas Station, which is only both of, three of the members of the Board. I have with me the owner of the gas station, Roddy, and I would like to distribute a small package of information. We have a slightly revised plan which shows unfortunately the nineteen-foot separation between the two sets of pumps. And I think that twenty is ideal, and we should have twenty. I have also attached a letter from Haylim Shabak, who has been involved in the engineering of gas stations for more than twenty years. And he indicates in this that there are no formal standards for the separation of pumps. However, twenty feet is considered ideal. And we have on the plan nineteen feet, and the reason for that is that in the past, we have indicated that we plan to have a planter that's thirty inches wide by eighteen inches deep. And I think that this should be eliminated on the basis that we are proposing to have three-foot flower pots in front and in the rear of each of the pumps, which would, if we were allowed to eliminate that eighteen inches, permit the distance between the pumps to be, or between the islands to be twenty feet rather than nineteen feet. We have here the thirteen parking spaces that we have shown in past site plan approvals. We plan to relocate the door to the gas station so that it would be in front of rather than in the middle of the traffic lanes. We would also...
We were saying you were going to eliminate something?
Pardon me?
What did you, I, I didn't get what you just said.
The front door right now is in the middle of the traffic lane.
All right, okay.
And what we are doing is reducing the sidewalk area and putting the door to the entry of the gas station about eight feet from the end of the building. We'd also have another door, six feet from the end of the building, that would be available for those waiting for their cars to be repaired.
Where's that door?
That door is about two feet to the left of the other door that's shown. And it's also... also on the three-foot sidewalk. I would ask that instead of the proposed 30-foot by 16-inch strip of planting, we have four three-foot flower pots that would allow the landscaping to be more visible and attractive to the patrons of the facility. I also have a photograph, two photographs, one of Sunoco Station within a half mile off the Milton border on Quincy, in Quincy, which is near the station, which has a 20-foot separation between the islands. I think this is safer, provides more space, and is more attractive. I also have attached a picture of the Gulf Station, which is located on Furnessburg Parkway, in which the space between the pumps is only 18 feet. And although it is serviceable to the customer traffic and provides a degree of safety, I believe that the 20-foot ideal separation between the islands would be preferable. In order to do this, we'd want to eliminate the 30-inch planting by the sidewalk and replace it with the three-foot diameter plantings that are proposed in the, in the current plan. We also plan to have a Welcome to Milton sign in a green area at the front of the gas station, and this would be, of course, subject to the approval of the Sign Review Committee. And I would be hopeful that the Planning Board could encourage the sign...
But the planting, of course, would be subject to site plan approval.
Yes, but I hope that the overall schematic would be appropriate for the gas station, appropriate for the town, and that would be approved. We'd be able to have plantings together with a Welcome to Milton, East Milton Square rock that we are hoping to create at this location.
I think that a Welcome to East Milton Square rock is a fine idea, but with or without the rock, there's going to be a little green area there.
With or without the rock, there'll be a little green area there, there's no question about it. But I think it's appropriate that we indicate on that side of town, which is coming in from Dorchester, some sort of Welcome to Milton. And I think that signage would be appropriate, however, I think that would be the purview of the Sign Review Committee as opposed to the Planning Board.
Well, I, I, I think that you've got something up for it. I'm not sure it isn't a, it isn't, you know, we could put a rock there. If the rock says something, then of course the Sign Review Committee would determine that.
That's correct.
But we could certainly put a rock there. Now, one thing, you've got all these parking spaces, and I understand that Mr. Thomas is able to use them when, from time to time, if they're available. But we don't want to have a lot of cars parked there in sort of dead storage because it's not a, it's not an attractive use. And also at, at dead storage, if you've got derelict cars, you should, you should store them somewhere else.
I agree.
Rather than, rather than in these parking spaces. I mean, we, one, we, we want parking in this area, but we, we want it to be the right sort of parking. I mean, you don't need for the gas station probably this many spaces, although you need some when you're doing a repair business. But we don't want it to end up, a lot of derelict cars in the, in the parking spaces.
I think that is correct, and I don't think there's any intent to have derelict cars in the parking spaces. In the past, they've had a number of employees that have parked there, and I pointed out that directly across the street, there's service zone parking, and these people would qualify for the service zone parking, and perhaps that these 13 spaces are too many for the site, considering that the Milton Field up the street has something like four parking spaces and has two bays operational. I would like to see more of these parking spaces empty.
Okay, I, I, I think that we're, we, the theory is we're on the same theoretical basis for these parking spaces. I, you know, as you know, I, I mentioned the fact that I thought the, I thought the canopy could be smaller. But then I, I considered the fact that this is in the business zone and you're allowed to go right to the property line with your, or three feet?
Correct.
Is it, is it three feet if you're not on the property line?
Six feet.
Zero or six.
Zero or six.
Well, shouldn't this be six then?
We moved this back three feet.
Right, but how...
In consideration of the sentiments...
How far from the property line is it?
It appears to be about five feet.
Right, it should be six feet, right? I, I think it should be six feet because that's what the zoning requires.
Either zero or six feet for, for a building.
What?
For a building, it requires zero or six feet.
Well, it's a structure. I, I mean, it's sort of a building.
It's kind of a...
It's kind of a building. So that should be six feet, which, which is satisfactory to me. And any sort of labyrinths, I, you know, the current sign on the current canopy is not very elegant, and, but we're, I'm certain that the Sign Review Committee can work out a better plan.
I agree that it should be eloquent, and if it's not eloquent, it should be made eloquent.
Elegant and eloquent.
It should be made eloquent.
All right, now...
The existing plan has three feet, you want six?
Yeah. That's what the zoning says, you have to be six feet or zero feet.
I, I would ask the Board to approve it as is, and if it's necessary, according to the zoning enforcement officer, we will go to the Board of Peels and have that approved. We moved this back three feet at the specific request of members of the Planning Board that wanted a further setback for the canopy.
You, you did indeed, but it wasn't, it wasn't that the Planning Board begged you for three feet. I mean, you gave us three feet, but it, it wasn't as though we said three feet and you're there.
Well, I hope the Planning Board never has to beg, and it did not beg in this case.
It rarely begs, except that sometimes, sometimes comes close, but probably not in this case.
What I would like to do is to have a 20-foot separation between the islands for purposes of safety, and I think that when we're talking about a gasoline station, we're talking about active traffic movement, et cetera, safety is and should be a priority.
All right. I think that the, I, I guess I've, I've got two things. I think that your 30-inch, 30 by 18-inch wide planting strip would not work.
I agree.
I, I think that it's...
I think it's not safe. I think people are likely to...
Well, I, I think it's too small and people run over it. I, I wonder about your flower pots and people disposing of cigarettes and...
Oh, no, no, flower pots are for flowers, they're not for cigarettes.
No, I, I understand that, what they're for, but the, how they're used is something else again. And I, it does seem to me that the green space will be subject to a further, you're going to have to get our approval for what you're going to do with the little green space. I see that, but that's not, that's, I'm not sure that I understand that entirely. Those could be poison ivy bushes, for all I know.
We haven't decided yet, but we have not considered poison ivy bushes yet.
All right, Mr. Duffy.
Just, just regarding that corner, Bob, and that signage, I just don't think it's appropriate to have a gas station be the welcoming agent to the East Milton. I think it belongs somewhere else, Welcome to East Milton. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, where do you think people should be welcomed?
Not there, not, not at the gas station.
The whole thing is, of course, that they probably won't be welcomed if they're not welcomed there.
They'll be fine, they'll be fine.
But the other thing, Granite Ave is one-way going north, so nobody's coming that way. A few cars will come and turn onto Wood Street, but those are people who already know Milton. You know, it's a, it's a one-way street.
It's approximately a mile from there to the Boston Line, and unfortunately, there's no Welcome to Milton sign in any way, shape, or form in that entire area. Many of the cars approach from the north going south and will be taking that curve over the expressway, and they will be able to see the Welcome to Milton sign and know that they are indeed in a different town. I think it would be appropriate, but I think I'd leave it for the Sign Review Committee to make the final determination on that matter.
Okay, now...
Can I offer a suggestion to Mr. Duffy? What if the sign just said East Milton Square?
Uh, no.
Good.
It's just, it's one end of the square.
Yeah?
Yes, one end of the square. I don't, I think exaggerating the importance of this to weigh, weigh with people, but I don't think we need Welcome to Milton at a gas station.
Okay, now, Pete.
This plan doesn't address my questions about safety and standards. In fact, it doesn't comply with your own engineer's letter on making recommendations. Starting from the front of the building, moving that curb back to within one foot of the building, that means that the overhang on a vehicle can hit the building without even hitting the curb, because when a car swings, it goes two feet over, and that's why the original thing was out there, so cars can hit that building and that curb's not going to protect it.
No, the cars cannot hit the building because there will be bumpers installed to project both the cars and the building.
Well, and that's what's recommended by, by your engineer, but if you put bollards out, that reduces the, the width again. The engineer talks about a minimum of 13 feet, but you've got 12 feet and 11.85 feet, so it doesn't address the standards that your own engineer is, is proposing. She recommends, or he recommends, that the lane closest to the building should be 13 feet wide with bollards along the building. So that means that those first pumps have to be 14 feet from the building. There just is not room.
We have a room of building.
Not according to your plan and not according to the end here. I don't think it's safe, and I cannot, I, I won't go to support this plan.
I am disappointed with that. I believe it is safe. I think we can have the required dimensions in the building, the required dimensions in the sidewalk. I showed you a picture...
The plan doesn't show them. The plan doesn't show those dimensions.
The plan indeed does show the dimensions, but the plan is taken back by the 30-foot by a foot and a half that is, has the flower bed, which I think is both unnecessary and unreasonably restricted. And by the use of the flower pots, I think that we can have the landscaping improvements without that 30, 30-foot by 18-inch strip.
This is here, the three and a half feet sidewalk. That's the side here from the pump to the sidewalk is a 12-foot. So we have 15 feet. So when we move that sidewalk, it's a three and a half feet sidewalk, 14 feet, plus the 12-foot.
This plan indicates that there's 12 feet between the pump island and the relocated sidewalk. Once it's relocated, you've got 12 feet. Your own engineer says it should be a minimum of 13 feet, and there should be bollards. So that means you need two more feet than your plan shows.
No.
Therefore, it's not consistent with your own engineer's recommendation. I'm not, I am not, under any circumstances, going to prove this. It does, it is not safe in my estimation.
Okay.
And I've talked to engineers, I've gone online and spent a lot of time looking for standards, and they're not clear, but this doesn't even comply with what your own engineer is recommending, so I, I can't endorse it.
That's not true because the...
I just showed where it didn't, so I'm not going to argue any longer. I'm, that's, that's it.
Can I explain what my engineer said? That he could, that we could reduce the three and a half foot island to three feet.
Right.
Okay, and that would give another foot.
Well, then show it on a plan, that these dimensions work. It doesn't work.
And in addition to that, we're requesting that the Planning Board requirement of having 18 inches for a flower bed be removed so that we can provide for the safety of the traffic, the safety of the people, and the safety of Milton. That's what we're concerned about. And with that, we can have the recommended distance between the bollards and the building and the, and the pumps.
All right, let's, let's see if we can, see what the Board thinks about eliminating the, eliminating the proposed 30-foot by 18-inch wide planting strip.
It would be eliminated in lieu of the additional flower pots that would be...
It would be eliminated so that we could get a little more space there, because space is important, and that you do, you have flower pots, and there would be some provisions that they would have to contain growing, growing things.
Right, not cigarette pumps.
Not cigarette pumps. But my own feeling is that this 30-foot by 18-foot planting strip is not likely to succeed as a planting strip, it's likely to be a dead space. And this is the business zone, and obviously, I mean, Mr. Jackson raises good points that you need more space, and here's, here's 18 inches of, of space, which would be useful. So I would support eliminating this. I, I, obviously, there would be a requirement for that with or without a Welcome to Milton, there would be a requirement for a green, green space there, and we'd, we'd want to know a little bit about, about it. Always specify what it would be. We could do that. We've got lots of gardening expertise on the Board, as well as design expertise. So I'd be prepared to eliminate it. What about, what about you, Ed?
I don't think it's needed at all.
I agree.
Wouldn't, wouldn't be respected.
I don't think so. So I think that we've got a sense of the Board that that can be eliminated. I don't think so. So I think that we've got a sense of the board that that can be eliminated. Yes.
Could I go to the subject of the flower pots?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheffield submitted this picture
Yes.
of a local gas station to the board.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they can see it clearly at home. It shows a canopy with signage. It shows another sign by the sidewalk. And at this point here, it shows a flower pot. What I'd like everybody to do on the board that has this in front of them is take your finger, put your finger over the flower pot. You know, take your finger off. Does that improve the ugliness of that structure and the signage? If your finger on it or off it, it doesn't improve it a bit. It's a, it's a waste of time when you have the ugliness of a canopy with signage on it and so forth. And a flower pot down below here, you're supposed to soften that up and make that a pretty scene. It's utter nonsense that that flower pot in some way makes this area beautiful. It's ugliness to the tenth degree with signage and stuff spilled all over the landscape. So the flower pot does absolutely nothing for me.
I would agree that this, this is not as elegant a canopy as your competitor up the street has.
It is not, and we do not show that for elegance or beauty. I think that the canopy is glaring. I think that the Sign Review Committee would be repulsed by it. However, I wanted to show area gas stations that were within a quarter-mile or a half-mile of Milton and how their dual pumps were arranged so that the board could be aware of similar facilities in other townships. If this one is twenty feet apart, the second one is only eighteen feet apart. In our plan, we have nineteen feet apart. I would like it to be further away from the building and enlarge the distance between the, between the islands by as great a amount as possible. But I believe that this is safe. I believe this is doable, and I believe that this should be approved by the planning board tonight.
Okay, now, Mr. Lynch, do you have a view of this?
I've come in late. I just had a chance to look at the
Until you came in, I was going to say that with Mr. Jackson's statement that he wants us to approve this plan, I was going to say that we really needed a full board to, to
Does anyone have a scale?
You need a ruler. You've got a scale here.
It looks like an inch equals twenty feet.
One inch equals ten feet.
That's on the big. That would be on the big plan.
That's the big plan. I see this been reduced.
All right, all right. So wait until now.
I know Pete is concerned with getting a car
Right around here.
Right here, yeah. One inch equals ten feet, okay. Right, thank you. It's at least twenty, and it looks to me to be
They say it's twelve point oh-four to the pump and the sidewalk.
Right.
But the sidewalk is only a foot wide at that point.
Of course, twelve point
Well, according to this scale, it's twenty feet. It's, it's one inch equals And right, here it is here.
But, but, look at the, look at, this is twelve point oh-four feet. So you can see that one and a quarter is twelve point oh-four.
The plan must be wrong because
No, that's ten. One inch is ten feet. And so it was one and a quarter, that was one and a quarter feet, so that's twelve is about right.
Okay, so that's right. You're absolutely right. It is, okay. So let's see, that's, that's about twelve feet, six inches. He's got twelve feet, oh-four, okay. Now, a cow is about six.
Between six and six and a half.
So what are you going to do to keep them from hitting the building?
We're going to put bollards up and we're also, if it's, this concept is approved, we're going to increase the lane size from twelve to thirteen feet between the building and the first row of pumps.
Okay.
We're going to eliminate the eighteen-inch
Baseroom.
Flower pot. And we're going to replace that by the four three-foot diameter flower pots in front of the pumps.
I don't know. It seems to me that putting the flower pots under the canopy, like you are planting the deal, is not a very progressive gardening idea. Because they're indoors. They're indoor plants then because they've got a roof all the way.
Well, they'll be outdoors, but they won't be available to get the rain that would normally come down.
Which is really the reason that you put plants outdoors.
Right.
Okay, I, you know, that's, that, gas station owners are not gardeners.
That's true.
I suspect we're going to need Emily for this.
Emily is tied up tonight, and this is a motion that only needs three
It does need three, but I, you know, I'd like to, I mean, I
After the approval, the owner of the gas station will meet with Emily and
Well, after the approval, I'd have to write something because there are conditions on this approval.
Correct.
That'd have to be written. So it would be a I mean, I could, I do think that that canopy, that this canopy is, is really a brooding presence.
Oh, it's terrible. It would never be allowed by a sign review committee.
But it's just so big. It's just so big. I mean, it goes over the roof of the station, goes right out to the sidewalk or beyond the sidewalk.
No, it doesn't go beyond the sidewalk.
Right, it goes right to the property line. Do we have, have you submitted a sketch of what your canopy's going to look like?
Uh, no, we're going to submit that to the, the Sign Review Committee for the appropriate approval of the signage on it, but I think that
That has to do with All right. All right, Pete has said he's not going to vote for this plan.
I, I trust after I explained that with the elimination of the planting, eighteen-inch planting area, we'd be able to expand it so that it would be within his threshold that he might reconsider.
Well, I, I think, but it doesn't appear on this plan.
Uh, it doesn't need to appear in the plan, as you can wisely write it in such a way that it would take into consideration the sentiments of the planning board.
Well, this says it's going to be a three-foot canopy. Is that what this is, three feet? Three feet?
I think we need to add some, add some end giving.
It's, it's, that's what came from the manufacturer and that includes the lights. That includes the lights and the fire suppression system.
It doesn't look three feet to me. You're talking about the width?
Right.
Well, this is fifteen feet.
One of the things that I handed you is a copy of
This is fifteen feet.
Design guidelines.
It says three feet, yeah, I see that.
Right. But it's design guidelines from the city of Scottsdale, Arizona. And if you go to it, I, I went everywhere to find it. If you look inside there, there is preferred design characteristics of the canopy and the island pumps. And one of their things is to keep that number as small as possible. It gives explanations. It also goes into some of the landscape design features that you're talking about. But the issue with this particular canopy is they're putting fire suppression up there that will match what the gas station on Canton Ave has.
And that suppression system is actually going to be in
Within the canopy.
In the canopy, okay.
That one that you have right on the Sunoco doesn't have it in it.
But the Gulf does. And the Gulf is only eighteen feet wide.
What was Gulf, it's no longer Gulf.
It is Gulf on Burness Park.
No, the other one, the one on Canton Ave that we have.
That was, I don't have a picture of that.
I know, but that has a fire suppression system on it.
Okay, well, we're going to, obviously, one condition is going to have to speak to what the canopy's supposed to look like. Because we're not going to give part-bloosh approval to a canopy that we have no idea what it's going to look like.
Especially since it could look like, no, and the Sign Review Committee has nothing to do with what the canopy looks like. In fact, it's just what's on the canopy that they have authority over. The Sign Review Committee, you would have a very good legal argument saying this has nothing to do with you what this canopy looks like. Okay, I, I think we need Emily to, yes.
Could I go over a safety issue, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are you going to wait for Emily?
No, I'd like to go over the safety issue. I'd like to get a plan showing, eliminating the strip, showing what the measurements are, showing where the bollards are going to be to keep these things from hitting the building.
I think I might want to wait until Emily's here to discuss this matter. It's of such great importance, Mr. Chairman, I'll wait until Emily's here.
Okay, I think that that's, this is the right way of doing this because the plan is not able to be approved. I'm going to want a little landscape plan as to what you're going to do. You heard Mr. Duffy say, forget the sign. Whether it's forgotten or not, we need a little landscape space here with or without the welcome to Milton sign. And then you might tell us what grows without, under a canopy because what's growing at that shelf at that Sunoco station is pretty pathetic. I mean, it really is. It's not, it's non-attractive plant. But we need, we need this layout made specific because that's what's going to happen. And we are going to specify what the canopy is going to, is going to be. And then the Sign Review Committee can work its magic. Yes.
Should we have some sort of rendering of the, of the canopy? I think would
It would be useful.
I think so.
Either that or we will, we will use our expertise and render one ourselves.
I think we should have one.
Okay.
People at home can see what
So I'm, I'm, you know, I, I think it's unfortunate this is dragging on and on, but so be it. Bill, thank you for these Scottsdale things. I think they're going to be useful and I look forward to reading them. I think we just got them tonight, didn't we? Okay. So we're going to continue to the ninth, what time, Bill? And I'm going to, I'm going to write something up for the ninth on the hope that we're going to, we're going to, we're going to get through this. Okay, so continue
Can I change that to six forty?
Continue to six forty on the ninth of June. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
No, that's yours.
Six eighty-three to six eighty-five Brush Hill Road.
Ed, thanks.
Just not mine.
Who was this sitting on the table?
Your face.
Is that your scale, Bill?
I need a scale at home.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield. And I have the pleasure of representing the owner and developer of six eighty-three to six eighty-five Brush Hill Road. And I would like to introduce Jim DeSalle, who will go over the plan with you. Jim is from the firm of DeSalle Burke Associates. And he is a renowned expert in this engineering field.
How you doing? I'm Jim DeSalle from DeSalle Burke Associates. I hope I'm here, so hopefully, this new design gives everyone satisfaction with this subdivision. After the last meeting, we did
Point of origin. Do you want to tilt it so the audience can see it also, Jim?
Do you got, I mean, soon you have property plans, you're right.
We do actually have a copy of the plan.
Yeah, let's
But let's
We have a, I have multiple copies of the
Reduced ones?
They can follow along at home.
Sheet four is what we're going to be looking at.
Sheet four of eight, correct?
The, the proposed layout, we've reduced to the eighteen feet that was requested in the last hearing. At the end of the road, we have a forty-four-foot cul-de-sac with a twenty-four, I mean, I'm sorry, twenty-six-foot landscape area in the middle. This allows for a eleven-foot plow with a F-450-style truck to be able to maintain this driveway. The, we've increased the grade, the centerline grade, to twelve percent, which, and in effect, what we're trying to do is to reduce the speed of the road instead of a thirty-foot, I mean, a thirty-mile-an-hour road. We're looking for something in the twenty-mile-an-hour range. We've put a slight curve in the road. We've adjusted the entrance so it's closer to the existing entrance. It'll be approximately, if you're looking at the right-hand wall that cuts back in up the existing driveway, we've got, the right-hand side of the road will be about twelve feet, I mean, I'm sorry, about ten feet to the right of that. So it's more in line. It's not perfectly centered with the existing driveway, but as you know, the existing driveway cuts back off to the right. So this, this allows for safe vehicular and utili, emergency vehicle access to come in and out. This, the way we moved the road over, we actually, we put, we have a sidewalk on the right-hand side here now and it ends before the actual cul-de-sac. That allows us to push the cul-de-sac over to the right a little bit more and save a couple more of the maples that were, there's a couple of twenty-four-inch maples that we should be able to save in that landscape area. So we're also saving a few more trees in the back that were originally going to be removed. The issue with the neighbors had mentioned that they don't want a sidewalk. The board wants a sidewalk. We've discussed with engineering and the problem that we would have. If we put the sidewalk in, it should be a paved sidewalk. If it's crushed stone with a twelve-percent grade, it's just going to be a mess. It's not maintainable. If the sidewalk is going to be an issue, it either should be in or out completely. And that could be up to the board. My client is, would take away the board wants to
But you've laid out a sidewalk on one side splitting going to the other side going up, and it ends right here.
And it ends here.
And that's the paved sidewalk.
And it doesn't go around the cul-de-sac, but And it doesn't go around the cul-de-sac, but--
So we can save the two trees.
Exactly. And we're trying to-- You know, the whole purpose of this design is to create a country lane and preserve as much of the vegetation and the existing trees, which are some of the substantial-- That's pretty much the way we left it. There's a list of-- On the revised letter, there's a list of waivers that would be required. The design speed, which is supposed to be designed for thirty mile an hour, we need waiver for that for the twelve percent grade. The centerline curve in this area had to get the jaw that everyone wanted to-- Just so that you're not looking up an alley. Would be a seventy-five foot centerline as opposed to a hundred and fifty foot centerline. The handicap ramps that are required down at the end, they're not really needed considering that there's nothing out here to get into. There's no sidewalk on Brush Hill Road. The longitudinal grade, same idea, eight percent is the maximum under the regulations. We're asking for a reduction-- I mean, an increase to twelve percent.
Well, if someone with a wheelchair was let off, how would they get up?
I would assume up to center of the road.
But shouldn't there-- I mean, shouldn't there be a way of getting onto the sidewalk?
I'm hoping no one's gonna just dump someone off at the end of the road. If they're going in to the properties, I would assume that, you know, they're gonna be going in the driveways.
Well, I think-- Is there-- There's gonna be a curb there, right?
Yes.
You could put in a-- You could put the handicap ramp right here.
We could put a same handicap--
I think that that would be a good plan.
And there'd be a handicap on the one side--
Yeah.
At the sidewalk.
That's--
Sure. Okay. We can do that.
Question, Jim. Was this always intended to be a public way, or was it one time proposed to be a private way?
It was proposed to be a public way, and now it's gonna be a private way. Town won't accept it.
It says "public way" up here, Jim, on the beachwood have-- On the beachwood lane up on the left it says "public."
No, it's gotta be maintained private.
So that's gonna be changed to private?
Yeah, that was-- That's from the--
That's probably all--
Should've been removed.
So now it's gonna be private?
Private, right.
That's correct.
Thank you.
What does the fire chief say about the fire alarm box? So you're gonna ask him?
We'll double-check it with him, but it's--
I mean, if he-- Unless he says "fine," there will be a fire box.
If he wants it, it'll go in.
Okay.
He does not want it.
He does not want--
He does not want it. He's not using fire boxes.
He's not?
No, he's not.
It's maintenance.
Well-- It is a maintenance issue, and because of cell phones, they've actually--
They don't work?
They're labor bears.
Okay. All right, well, that's good to know.
The sidewalk, we're requiring-- We're requesting a waiver from sidewalk on both sides. If the board finds it in their purview that they wanna--
You're going to get-- You're going to get the waiver for a sidewalk on both sides?
On both sides.
But I know-- I think that the sense of the board is that there has to be a sidewalk. Is that the sense of--
Of course.
Yeah, it is the sense of the board. It is the sense of the board.
The planting strip between the sidewalk and the existing road, we want a reduction from the four feet to two feet. The reason for that is specifically in this area here with the grading and the twelve percent grade, the farther we kick, the steeper this side grade gets.
Okay.
And the whole purpose of reducing the width of the road is to maintain the existing trees and keep as much of the existing vegetation as we can. The shade trees, same idea. There's-- There'll be substantial plantings in the properties themselves and the road, the way it meanders off the actual street layout. The-- To plant extra trees along the edge of the way seems redundant.
Well, the question is, should there be-- Are there parts of the way that needs a few trees?
I certainly think some plantings here would be appropriate.
All right, so we've got-- We've got an idea that some plantings may be appropriate.
The problem runs into is-- That you run into is the areas that are gonna be missing some trees are also gonna be a steeper grade.
Okay.
Then maybe they're planted out a little bit at the top of the grade or on the other side.
Well, if you get--
I think when you're doing construction of this magnitude, some planting certainly would help soften--
Honestly, there's gonna be substantial plantings for these properties. I mean, it's not gonna be two-gallon Home Depot specials.
Oh, no, I understand when these people develop their properties, but there's-- I think some additional trees there would be a worthy investment.
Okay, so I'm not sure how we're gonna do that if they're not on the plan. If they're not on the plan, we'll have to make some sort of-- Some sort of condition that they can be plunked in anyhow. We'll just see what we could do with that.
The fire alarm system we discussed and the street lighting. We're proposing this to be more of a country road, and we plan on putting in each individual, where it is a private road, each individual homeowner will-- When we construct the dwellings, will have lighting as necessary to illuminate the street and the entries to the driveways along each individual homeowner's that they will maintain and they will turn on, so there won't be--
Or not turn on, to save a little-- Save a little dough.
I don't think, you know, having a dark street is gonna-- Or saving a couple of dollars--
Well, no, I understand that, but it seems to me a few streetlights might not be a bad idea. Appropriate streetlights.
Who's gonna maintain--
Who's gonna turn them on? Or are they gonna just go on and back?
Well, homeowners association, I guess. I mean, that's the-- That's the-- That's the issue with the private road. I mean, that's why you're suggesting that the homeowners have lights in their houses to shine on the street. Because you don't want to-- You don't want to make the homeowners' association pay for plowing, lighting. Exactly.
It is a maintenance issue. I mean, and the question is--
It is a maintenance--
During construction, we put the illumination at the edge of the road where the-- Where the driveways come in and make sure that the lights illuminate the entire roadway. People, when it gets dark, they're gonna turn their lights on. It's-- So it will--
So what did you say they would do?
We're gonna-- When-- During construction, they will make sure that the driveways are well illuminated, and so that when people turn their outside lights on, there will be lights down at the street. It won't be like-- Like, it'll be up toward-- You know, the outside light will be up towards the house, and there'll be nothing down at the streets. There is no guarantee that they'll turn them on, but common sense is if you're gonna turn your outside lights on, they go on. But that's the-- Again, like the country lane, I mean--
Yeah, you've got-- You've got a point. I mean, there is a point, and then there is--
And I--
There's the bouncing point. All right, keep going.
And I believe that's the-- That would be the end of the waivers.
All right.
And they are outlined in the-- In the report that we sent over.
What? Excuse me, this is just a matter of-- Now that Bernie is here, should-- And there-- We would have enough people for the--
Thirty-six--
The thirty-six Central Avenue. Should-- If people are ready to approve that amendment, he could come back and we could do it tonight.
You mean, he could be called and asked to come back again, or we just do it?
After this is over, yes.
Yeah, we certainly have to finish this before we--
Waylaid.
Exactly, but I'm inclined to think that we should ask him to come back.
If he's wanting to come back, I'd just--
See you.
Okay, you tell him to come back.
I gave up dinner, so--
That means he's sitting at home watching this, that's how he knew you weren't there.
No, we're not lying. We're not lying.
All right.
I'll tell you what my formulation of the Andriani situation is. I make it that he has a hundred and twenty feet of frontage on the--
Private.
Proposed private way, which is four hundred and eighty feet long, which means that he has frontage on a quarter of the length of the private way. Now, there are-- With his house, there are six lots. And presumably, in the normal-- If you did it per capita, each lot would be responsible for one-sixth of road maintenance and plowing. My inclination is that making him responsible for a sixth is too much. He is basically tying into this roadway. I don't think he would tie in paying a sixth of the cost. So I would propose that his cost would be his sixth times a quarter, which would be one-twenty-fourth of the road upkeep and the plowing. Yeah. He's got one-quarter of the length of the street.
Yeah.
He would be, in the normal course, paying one-sixth.
Right.
But--
Fifty percent discount, that's one-twelve.
Since he is only maintaining a hundred feet of street-- Or you would take one-quarter of one-sixth, maybe it's a division. But in any event, he would-- He would only pay for the--
Does this happen to Fordham?
The hundred-- The hundred feet of street that he would-- That he would front on, because--
I can say give him a fifty percent discount and giving him one-twelve, but giving him seventy-five percent discount seems to be--
So everyone else is gonna subsidize him?
Well, no, because if he puts his-- If he puts his driveway out to Brush Hill Road, they will pay more.
Fine.
Well, I mean, it's not fine.
What-- If you pay a sixth, I can understand that, that makes sense. You're one of six people that are paying. I mean--
Not when your house is right next to the road, and you're paying for the stretch up above you.
The other thing that I can-- I can-- I can understand that would make some sense. If you do it prorated on your little frontage, like if you're getting a sewer bedment, you do it on a percentage of your frontage. But to take a sixth and then take a quarter of that, because that's part of the road--
Because he's only-- Because he only fronts on the quarter of the road, because he is basically tying into this road. It's going to be-- If he doesn't tie in, it's going to be a fifth. That's just the way it's going to be. People are going to pay more, and it isn't-- It's going to hurt no one for him to have a driveway tying into this roadway, especially since he would have to submit plans for his driveway to the developer for approval, and if there were a dispute, then the town engineer would resolve them. That's a perfectly good way of doing it. The question is, you say he should pay a twelfth of the total cost.
I think a fifty percent discount might be reasonable, but anything more than that would be irrational.
I'm not sure it would be irrational, but--
If I'm standing-- If I bought this house, or I bought this house or this house, why-- I mean, and this road's gonna cost X amount of dollars, it's gonna cost X amount of plowing, and it's gonna cost X amount to maintain it for-- And put money in for future. It only seems fair that if you're gonna-- You divide it by six, by the total number of people using the road.
Except he doesn't use the upper parts of the road. It's not like he's wearing-- Putting any wear and tear, or--
Honestly, I have never seen that.
You've never seen it? You've never seen a private way that people, you know, pay on their distance--
We've done several--
Access?
Homeowners' associations, and it's usually divided by the number of people--
It's easier that way, isn't it?
It's more equitable, it's more fair to everybody.
Not necessarily.
Well, that's why I was proposing a fifty percent, but anything more than that seems to be--
What about this guy?
No, this guy should--
Pay is--
But why? He's only using this much.
Well, that's true.
It's true.
Look, I don't think that you're-- You're getting to a solution very well with your protestations. I think that, in any event, he's got to-- I would-- I would-- I think a twelfth has a certain ring to it.
If you were Dr. Andriani, it would have a fantastic ring.
I don't know that it would be fantastic, but I think it would be not unreasonable. In any event, in approving this subdivision, since the developer and the doctor came to a conclusion, we will specify what the deal is going to be. And I would be prepared to do a twelfth. And if the doctor doesn't like the deal, he has options.
Can I ask, Jim, one question?
Yes.
If-- If they petition for this street to become public--
We can't.
They can't. Okay, all right. If the town-- Well, not this street, but if a town was going to apply bediments to some other street--
Mm-hmm.
How would they--
Based on frontage.
Give you up the percentage?
Your frontage.
The frontage.
Based on frontage, period.
Even though this guy here travels-- And putting wear on the whole street, this guy isn't--
It's based on your frontage on the road.
Seems only fair going to do it.
Yep.
Right.
Yes.
Question, Jim, is a homeowners' association anticipated--
Oh, absolutely. It has, it's required.
Will the doctor be invited to be part of the homeowners' association?
If he wants to come out on that road, he has to.
Yeah.
Because it's a-- It's a privately-- It's a private road, everyone has to pay to make sure that it's--
Or he could-- He could contract-- He could have the right to come onto it and under contract with the homeowners' association. In other words, most homeowners are going to have their gas, their electric, all their utilities are going to go up that road. He already has his utilities that come in somewhere else. So it really-- There is a-- He is-- Would have to be a special type of homeowner if he were a part of the association. I-- The way I see it, it would be basically-- It would be sort of a tie-in fee, because he's not really part of your development, but he is using your road, and it's only fair that he pays something for use of it.
That's why I suggested a fifty percent discount of the overall.
It didn't seem unreasonable to me.
Yeah, so that would be instead of a sixty, pay a twelve.
Correct.
You know, I don't know what the numbers that we're talking about, but that sounds reasonable to me in terms of equitability and right of access and things like that.
If these utilities were dug up here, where Mr. Andriani's our doctor, he feeds up Brush Hill Road, is he gonna have to pay to resurface the street if they-- If they put a new sewer line in?
If they put in anything in to do with the road, yes. But usually, once the utilities are in, that's it for, you know, at least the next thirty years.
So how do you-- You're obviously gonna put this in some sort of language that--
Yes.
Okay.
There'll have to be an agreement. I would-- I would think that he might be responsible for utilities related to the road, like drainage, but certainly if he doesn't get his gas or electric or, you know, communications and things off of that, then I think he's-- You know, there's gotta be some reasonable negotiation of his class of membership.
Usually--
So--
Usually, if you build a road, you have to dig up the road because of-- Usually, usually, if you build a road, you have to dig up the road because of something, okay? Then the people share based on their rankings, you know? And whether that's surge, whether that's, you know, electricity. And usually, you don't dig up a whole road for electricity, but...
Well, you dig it up because you want a new tie-in, and that's basically the lot owner who pays for that.
Correct. Yep.
I mean, the sewer in the middle of a road usually doesn't fail.
Correct. The water doesn't usually fail.
Exactly.
Right.
I mean, the, the tie-in may leak where the homeowner's pipe comes into it, but it would seem to me that would be the homeowner's fault.
That would be the homeowner's out to the central line.
Okay. So that's a, that's the way I see, we solve this. We simply specify what the deal to be offered to the doctor is, and he gets to decide what he wants to do.
Correct.
Okay.
If the doctor decides not to accept the deal, what happens?
Then it's up to the doctor. He has the choice.
Well, he's here, I'll bet you he can say a few words, what he thinks.
I'm not sure I can understand, I mean, you're talking about the expenses of the road, but what about the cost?
Do you want to come up here so we'll...
They would build the road. You would build your driveway under plans engineered by a engineer of your choice. The engineer would submit the plans to the developer, and the developer would presumably approve them, but if he didn't, then the town engineer would have arbitration limits. And then you build it, and you pay for it. It's not a bad, it's not bad.
And then you, in addition, will be responsible for, under this proposal, 1/12 of the cost of maintaining that road, which is street sweeping, plowing.
Street lights.
Streetlights, if there's lights.
If there's.
Drainage maintenance.
So that's, that's how we're going to do it. I have a feeling. Because I don't see that you and the developer are making sufficiently good music together.
We're not going to be hearing it together.
So what else? Let's hear from, from, from other people who want to be heard. Who else wants to be heard? Yes?
Thank you, Tim Kernan, 642 Brushhill Road and Brushhill Area Neighborhood Association, sort of representing the Butters. A couple of, couple of points I'd just like to sort of reiterate and remind you. One is that the, as you look at the driveway, the left-hand side stone wall, the developer's proposing that that might be moved, and I suggested to him that they might leave that as is. I would ask you to leave that prerogative up to the developer. So in other words, we might be able to negotiate with the developer as to whether that left-hand edge of the stone wall should be moved or not. In other words, I believe he's proposing to move that stone wall to the right.
You mean, as we're looking up the driveway on the left-hand side?
Yes, that, that left-hand stone wall. So he's proposing to move it to the right.
Where do you see that?
In discussions with him.
All right, okay, we don't see that on the plan. When you say move it to the right, he's going to extend it closer to close? What he's going to do is take the stones that are disturbed and rebuild the wall on both sides to, to come up and enclose the new driveway opening?
Yes, yes. And so what we're proposing as an option, and I'd ask you to leave it as an option for the developer, is to leave that stone wall intact. In other words, it's an original stone wall, it's got a nice curve to it, let's just leave it there, as opposed to moving it. So I'm just asking you to consider in your orders that you leave with the developer, that allow him the option to, to move or not move that as, as he and the neighbors may see fit.
Okay, now let's just interrupt you for a minute and see what the story is on this.
Actually, we took this to the DPW director, and he liked that idea too, because of snow storage. As you come around here, if you're plowing the road, by not moving the wall out here, this gives you an area that you can do snow storage on, and he wanted it left.
Okay.
Don't bring the wall up. Leave it so that he can push snow in that direction.
So I, I, I think that is something that we'll do.
On the other side of the driveway where you're removing some stone wall?
Oh, 10 feet.
I'd like to see you use those stones to do a sweep, a curb back up and a sweep into the property to define that edge.
And, and relative to that, what we're proposing to do is to photograph a number of those stones, so they can basically get put back in roughly the same order and condition that they were originally put in. Just because when you take apart a stone wall, you never put it back together the same way.
Unless you number the stone.
Unless you number the stones and photograph it, and, you know, even then it doesn't always work, but...
All right, what else?
If you look at Lot 8, the 20-foot do-not-disturb boundary is, is not delineated on the, on plan on page four.
Page four, lottery.
This is page three.
It says Lot 8.
It says four.
In other words, the...
I don't see lot numbers.
It's a top right, is what he's referring to.
Yep. So in other words, it goes up the right-hand edge, but does not follow the back edges?
I guess it probably should on the section that's in Milton.
What about that dogleg, shouldn't they go around there?
Well, you have the building envelope already on there.
Right, but you don't have the do-not-disturb. In other words, you could, you've got the, you've got the do-not-build line delineating everything else.
Yeah.
And the do-not-disturb line just doesn't follow that section up there.
We can put it in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you should.
Thirdly, not...
We can only do that line.
To the Boston line.
To the Boston line.
Yeah.
We can't make rules.
Sure, yeah, right, right, right. And, and not to get involved in the negotiations of the driveway, but I'd suggest that if the planning board is going to get involved in those, those, setting some of those parameters, they do it in such a way to encourage Dr. Andriani to use the existing road and to structure it, to discourage him from cutting a road.
All right, well, you've heard what we propose to do, and we think that is a reasonable encouragement.
I would just suggest you look at the numbers.
But as we said earlier, the planning board doesn't beg.
I leave that in your lap. And fourthly, all the plans are showing the right-of-way to Brushhill Lane still in existence, and I think it needs to be made, I think that the drawings need to reflect the fact that that is, is going to dissolve.
But that's on a different lot.
We can't dissolve the right-of-way that exists on the Darley property, which is a major property.
Right, but you can agree to, with Darley to let it go.
We've, we've agreed to let it go as far as the development is concerned, and...
Does Darley have any rights?
He has, Darley has any rights.
Then he does.
And he has the right to recognize property. He chooses to avoid himself of such rights as mine to.
Sure. It would be, it would be better if he did, so maybe you could encourage him to, to divest his rights.
I believe that right-of-way was for the Boils to pass to Brushhill Lane, and it was a court case that decided that. There was, there was an issue with it, it's actually, it's recorded, and there was a Boyle versus a, I forget the people's names at the time, where they clarified the case that the Boyle had rights to pass and repass and maintain that as the way you would anyway in the town.
For the Boils, so Darley presumably would jump up in, like Darley's heels if this were to occur.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Probably for horses.
All right, so that, when title passes, sufficient steps will, will be taken to try and put this whole thing to, to rest forever. Okay.
And that's, that's it?
All right.
Other than we'd really like to have a narrower entrance on Brushhill Lane.
But we've been down that Brushhill Road, I mean. Thank you.
All right, Jim. Who else wants to be heard? Okay. All right, well, come up and, and...
Anthony Orsito.
And we will hear you.
As far as Dr. Andriani's concerned, I just, I see three fairways of doing it that I've actually seen done before. I haven't seen everything being done, lot frontage, lot size, or amount of homes. I just don't see how else that's figured.
Well, this is a special situation, and I think that we have, we have put a lot of deep thought into 1/12 of the cost of road repair and plowing.
Okay, how about the actual cost of the road? So you're, you're proposing to have him pay nothing for the access and just pay for maintenance?
Well, he's not going to help you pay for the road, because you wouldn't be building the road anyhow.
Right, but it's a private road.
And he is going to be helping you maintain it. I mean, it is a private road, but he's not going to, he is going to be, this is just an incentive to, this is why he thinks it's a good deal for him, that he doesn't have to build this road.
Oh, sure, it's a great deal.
It isn't a great deal. He's going to end up paying a twelfth of the cost, and it's going to be, the other homeowners are going to be glad for the help, because without it, that twelfth wouldn't be paid.
Right, but, but as a private owner, isn't it up to me what that's worth? I mean, he obviously gains value in his home, so do I get a share of his home when he sells it, the value gained by being on our subdivision?
Well, whether he gains value or not, who knows? I mean, his address will still be Brushhill Road.
Well, that's a given, if you're on a subdivision, I mean, that's a given.
We encourage him a driveway on your property.
I, I guess that, that is a point. I mean, the Brushhill Road address that he has is valuable. It's more valuable than a address on Beechwood Lane.
I disagree.
You disagree?
I disagree. You're on a cul-de-sac, I mean, it's a little different.
You're in the same place.
Your front yard, people, we were just talking about people going 20 miles an hour or 40 miles an hour in your front yard versus Brushhill Road, so there's definitely a value to that, especially having kids. I mean, you're in a cul-de-sac, that's kind of a given.
Brushhill Road is a country lane. Is, is actually one of the premier Milton streets, and...
I agree, I actually lived right around the corner the majority of my life, and I wasn't allowed to walk on Brushhill, because I'll pass the cars though. So that's my, furthers my point, that obviously the value of a lot being off a cul-de-sac is far more valuable. And I'm not asking, I mean...
The lot is the lot. The lot the land court created, it's got its utilities, it doesn't currently have an access, it has the right to access Brushhill Road. We'd sooner this didn't happen, and you know, the other homeowners in your subdivision would sooner it didn't happen too, because he would retain some money that they otherwise wouldn't see, and, and they would like that.
I, I agree with all that, I just, I just feel it to be just a little unfair, we're worrying about...
Asking him to pay a, a part of your road cost when he can just put a driveway in.
No, he doesn't have to pay a part of the road cost, he doesn't pay anything, but he also doesn't have to use it if he doesn't pay for it. I mean, it's, we're building the road, we own the land, if he doesn't want to pay what we're required, he can just let it, he doesn't have to use it.
Except we've been asking you for months to get together with him and work out a deal, and it hasn't happened.
I've spoken to him.
So we can, we can hold these plans until you work out a deal, and at that time approve it, which doesn't seem to be going to happen, so we're trying to expedite so that this can get approved.
We want to get this thing...
We want to get it done.
No, no, and I agree, and I have spoken to Dr. Andriani, if you remember. Two weeks ago, he said his lawyer was out till today, and he was supposed to make an offer. I didn't receive that offer, so now I figured I'll make, I'll make the offer. That it's 1/6, all lot frontage, a lot size, which is, I don't see any other favor to do it.
I, I don't think that's fair. That's my own feeling. I think the twelfth is fair, and I think that that's the way it goes sometimes. It doesn't pay to get up.
I just, I don't know, all right, that's fine, but are you going to set a price on what I'm selling the houses for as well? Because in essence, that's what you're doing. You're telling me what to sell an easement to him for.
This is a, a matter that has proven to be difficult, and we have urged resolution, and we made it clear that without resolution being agreed upon, we would simply determine resolution. And I think the twelfth is a, a good resolution. And I think that even though it undoubtedly galls you a little bit, in the end, you'll find it's, it's fine.
Fine, okay.
I don't think it will negatively affect the purchase price that you get for your property, the lots and the houses up there, so...
And we're not going to specify what you sell them for. And we're going to encourage you to sell them for a lot of money.
Okay.
Because that's good for the town. And we're, I think we're, everyone is on the same page here.
Except for a few Toronto property.
I think that, I think that everyone's going to be happy with this plan.
Fair enough.
All right, thanks for, anyone else? All right, now...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I have a little puzzle and one, just one piece of it. Is the town David McCrady, Brushhill Lane, am I understanding correctly, because it is a private road as I'm aware, that the town is not going to be plowing it? Because the town plows my private road, and it plows every other private road in the town.
Not every private road, but there are a number that they plow and some that they don't plow.
That will be up to the select.
So that, so that there'll be special bylaws for this particular private road?
Well, I don't think, well, there will be a permit which allows them to build, you know, to subdivide and build this property.
Yeah.
In terms of who pays for snow plowing, I think that's up to others.
This will be in the...
Because they do, there, there are some private roads that the homeowners pay to plow and some that the town plows.
It is my understanding through DPW, the only roads that the town does not do that are private are not passable by anything other than a passenger vehicle.
Does the town, does the town do the low estate?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Well, I would think...
Why do they do the low estate?
I, I don't know.
The neighbors got together and went up and told them they wanted the town to plow the street.
Is my understanding...
We designed it, it was to be a private way.
And in addition, it's also my understanding that the town has said that where they will plow private ways for, in the, in the event of emergencies, during, during, during storms or whatever. I just, it's just an observation that I was wondering why we're, we're, we're bickering over 1/6 or 1/12 when the town plows, that's what I was trying to, I guess that's the point that I was trying to make, is we're discussing something when the town, to the best of my knowledge, plows all private ways unless they are not passable by passenger, by, by a truck.
Could I address that? And that is, at the present time, the town plows all private ways unless they are...
I know one that they don't plow.
You're, you're fine.
It's an exceptional situation. It's an exceptional situation. However, I'm not sure that 10 years or 15 years from now, uh, they will have that same policy in effect. And when we are planning a road here, and it's going to be a private way, uh, we have to have some provision so that if the town takes some change in stance, then the owners of the property are aware of what their rights and responsibilities are.
There's also more, yeah, means. There's, I mean, the road itself, the water lines are private, everything's going to be private, sewer lines. And if they do break...
The drainage, uh...
Yep, they'll have to maintain the drainage, and the town won't do that.
Right.
So it's not just the plowing.
But the plowing is the, is, if the town plows, which I think the town doesn't, then the homeowner association
Will have to...
will have backup responsibility.
Right.
All right. Anyone else? All right.
It just seems to me we should get a clarification in the cell from Selectmen's Office about whether you want to plow.
But the current selectmen, it, it, it simply is that if they will plow it, then they'll plow it. And if they won't, then the homeowner association will be responsible to plow it. I assume that, uh, that the town will plow it, uh, but I could be wrong.
Mr. Chairman, it's private property.
Yeah.
If you were a selectman, would you allow a vehicle that's under your...
The low estate is private property. It's exactly the same.
Who made, have they made us call that they're not going to sue us if the plow breaks something? I don't know how they do it.
That's not our thing.
No, it isn't. It isn't.
I know a couple of years ago, there was a move afoot to divest the town of plowing any of the private ways. And because of vociferous opposition to that, the town backed out. So what, what happens in the future, I can't say.
The town does...
That's what I said. It was a ma, it would be a major change in public policy.
Correct.
And the selectmen of this town, and as far as I know, the selection of all towns really have deferred making any decision on it. But that's not to say that 10 or 15 years from now, the status quo will continue.
Well, let me ask Jim, if, you're dealing with Joe Lynch, Jim, did Joe Lynch assume he would be plowing this?
Yes.
He did.
Yes.
I asked you.
And that's the reason why he asked for no curbing on the inside so that they'd have the snow storage in the, um, in the, uh, the landscape island in the middle. Uh, the, the fact of the matter is, is we're going to have a homeowners' association. The homeowners' association is going to be responsible for the entire road. If the town chooses to plow it, so be it. That'll be X amount of dollars that the homeowners' association, association will not need to put into its budget. If the town says next year that we're not going to have, we're not going to plow this road, then that's, that number that the homeowner association will have to put in their budget, and they're going to have to maintain, they'll have to alter their homeowners' association fees yearly like any other business.
Yes.
Having had this discussion with Mr. Lynch, state law says that the town cannot do stuff on private property, but we do all over town. Mr. Sheffield is correct that you're trying, we need to address it now because in the future, this subject will come up again. When Peter said vociferously, he's correct. Um, I've heard several different times from several different people, a piece about plowing, plowing private ways, and it, it does need to be addressed. Whether the town plows it or not, there still is that piece underneath. Should they be, and it will come up again because we spend crazy money plowing these streets. We've got Stonebridge Lane. It's written right into the deed. No town plowing. You've got Carisbrook...
So that's a private road that they don't plow. The town does not plow.
Right, they don't. Carisbrook says right in the deed. They petitioned, and it's been denied. And I know for a while they didn't. I don't know if they do now.
Wasn't the low estate?
Low estate, they've always plowed. But they came out in, right, who didn't initially, but they came out...
I remember the meeting when they went to the selectmen.
Right, they, they packed the room for them.
Well, so I think that's, you know, that's really out of our hands, so...
Right, but you're addressing it before it becomes an issue.
Yeah. I, I mean, basically having this a private street is, uh, going to save the towns in doubt, uh, whether they plow it or not. And, uh, I think it's fine. I think there are good reasons why it should be private. And I think that if the town, I think the town should plow it if they plow the low estates. And at some point, as they decide they don't want to plow the low estates, then maybe, uh, they shouldn't plow this either. Anyone else? Okay.
Well, the streetlights are like a similar situation, though, isn't it? If the town's going to plow it, shouldn't it also have the streetlights? Seems to me.
How many streetlights have we talked about? Two?
I would think five.
Five?
Yeah.
How many, what do you say, Bill?
I'd say none.
You ten?
I'd say none, if you asked.
Okay, well, it seems like it should be decided before we sign off on this stuff.
Well, I, I, it better be. I think that we can close the public hearing, so let's have a motion to do that.
I'd make a motion, we close the public hearing so that we can begin writing a...
So we can begin discussing it, right. Okay, all discuss, all in favor. All right. Public hearing is now closed. Now, what are we going to do? I think that, uh, we, we basically got, um, we've got a plan that is generally acceptable to more or less everyone, and acceptable to many people, totally acceptable to many people, and, uh...
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. I hate even to say it.
Can a fire truck turn around here?
What is the fire truck situation at the turnaround?
They back out?
They'll back out. There is enough, he can maneuver on this road. And he wanted it to be at the 90-degree angle so that he can come at it from both sides. There is enough straightaway that he can do that. Having the area down here open still allows him to do it at a faster clip.
But we don't know whether he can go up the lane and make it around the right, the rotor, the planted island. Is that what we're saying?
Probably a smaller trajectory.
All the pumpers and engines can. I'm not sure about the ladder.
So the ladder would have to back down that 12% grade?
Or go over the...
Let's go over the grass.
Yeah, go over the grass.
He'd go over the grass in here.
Yeah.
He just...
I mean, certainly he has to be able to get through.
Or he'd go, go back up a driveway.
He can, he can drive right over the grass on this island.
Well, it depends if the island's planted or whatever.
If there are flat stones so that he can go over. Um, the whole idea of the island was to save the two trees, the two mature trees up there. He can drive over the whole island, so he could turn around.
Except where the trees are.
And they're on the edge.
No, I mean, certainly he has to be able to turn around because he can't be expected to back down that 12% grade.
He did have an issue with...
He can't. He didn't.
With the, you know, this was a request that I didn't agree.
So the, the plan as we, uh, as we see it, has, have they moved, have you moved it over? It's moved over on this plan?
It's moved over so that you show, it shows the two trees inside.
To save the two trees on this one, okay.
Just move this way, and the edge removed to the left.
Okay.
The only one I see so far on this is private where it says public.
Yeah.
Right.
And we're going to leave the stone wall, uh, subject to...
Left side.
Subject to, uh...
They're going to stay the way they are.
We're going to leave the stone wall?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to have a do not disturb of the dog leg.
Oh, right, right, correct.
We're going to have language that, uh, the owner will be agreeable to getting rid of the, uh, the easement over Dougherty, when there is an owner who can do that.
Excuse me, that's DeBegvar and Dougherty.
DeBegvar and Dougherty.
This line, it goes over.
Okay, well, we'll get rid of the easement. Is, uh, and then we're going to, uh, we're going to give, uh, Dr. Adriani the right to tie in with an engineer's plan submitted to the developer and approved with a arbitration provision by the town engineer to resolve disputes, anti-disputes, and then he's going to pay a twelfth of the cost of road maintenance, plowing. Let's see, what else? There's going to be, uh, all one of the documents which are going to be approved by town council.
On the street trees, I'd like to suggest that he plant a minimum of 12 shade trees in various locations.
Okay, to be determined by the, the tree warden in conjunction?
Yeah, that's fine. And either within the right-of-way or on private lots. If there's not space for them in the right-of-way, then they should be, you know, on the private lots. I think there's going to be plenty of disturbance during construction that some trees would be a nice thing to do.
If they're on a private lot, Pete, what assurances would, uh,
It would be...
that the owners will maintain them in the future?
We will, we will say that if they're on private lots, the owners will be encouraged to...
To maintain.
to be good to their trees.
The public actually has the right to plant street trees on private lots.
Well, it's usually on a tree easement.
Tree lawn.
The tree lawn. Not even a tree lawn. They can, within a certain amount of the right-of-way, they can plant.
Well, within the right-of-way.
No, outside the right-of-way.
Well, in any event, in any event, in any event, the developers certainly can plant 12 trees. 12 trees, okay. Now, streetlights.
No. It's not in keeping with the neighborhood.
Okay, what we're going to have to do is we will make a provision that there has to be adequate lighting provided through the homeowner association.
A dark street with a 13% gray, that's great.
Well, let's, let's think about this.
Are there, um, streetlights on Stonebridge Lane?
Yes.
Are there?
Yes.
How far apart are they?
I don't know, but I know that they are not, they're not in conforming with any of the lights we have in town.
Because they're private.
Because they're privately maintained.
And what is, what do they cost?
Do they cost?
Yeah.
I don't know that one.
Anyone complain about it?
I know that when I was going up there to look at the road under the as-built, that one or two of them didn't, didn't even work.
Now...
They were out, but that's just the bulk.
What is, how far apart are streetlights supposed to be?
Generally, minimum of, or minimum of 120 feet or something. That's a minimum. Sometimes they go up to 150 or...
What's the maximum?
It depends on the light.
Some or none.
Depends what you're looking for.
Some or none.
I mean, if we're trying to maintain a country lane and, I mean, there will be substantial light. I mean, these houses aren't going to be small, so they will be very well lit. And we're proposing to put lights at the end of the driveway, close to the street, so that when the people turn on their own side lights, there will be a light at the end of the driveway.
So the company knows where to turn in.
Exactly, and it's, they're not going to shut the light off to save, you know...
Yeah. I, I don't really think street lighting is needed here. I know other private lanes in town that just don't have, you know, going up off of Canton Avenue, I know several long driveways that there's no lighting or anything, and in some ways, it's safer without them, you know, because your eyes adjust and you use your headlights and things like that, so... I would like the idea of not putting streetlights out here. Unless, you know, I mean, if we were concerned with public safety, well, I don't know. I was going to say, talk to the police chief about public safety, but he would say we want lights every 50 feet.
Yeah, I think you're encouraging, you want to encourage the end of the driveways to have...
We can do that.
Postlights.
Right, postlights at the end of the driveways or something, something like that. That's, that makes sense.
Okay. We can require that, actually.
That would be a wonderful... Even Dr. Adriani's driveway probably should have one, huh?
With his grade, he's going to need it.
He's going to want it.
Okay, so we're going to have postlights in the homeowner, homeowner association. There's going to be some conformity. But the homeowner association will have control over, uh, over, uh, over design of postlights.
Yeah, or they'd be insistent or something.
Well, we'll work some language out on this. We're going to want that homeowner association document. But we are going to, I think, uh, take a vote with those conditions to approve this plan, subject to the written decision next time, uh, which will incorporate this stuff.
Sounds good to me.
So shall we, uh, shall we see how that works? Do we have a motion to approve this definitive subdivision plan, subject to the conditions, which we've discussed, which will be reduced to writing and, uh, put into a written decision? And we will be receiving homeowner documents from, uh, Mr. Sheffield. Okay?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that's on, next time we will have, uh, we'll have a writing. And, Mr. Sheffield, there have been plenty of these things around, so I think that you probably should be able to do it pretty quickly.
I will, and I'll turn it around so that the board can review it prior to its next meeting.
Okay, this is excellent. That's, uh, that's, I, thank you, everyone, for all your hard work on this because this is the way a subdivision is supposed to be put together, and, uh, I think the board is, uh, very appreciative.
I think the plan is significantly better than our last one.
Now, Mr. Sullivan, why don't you come up with your plan, and we'll see what we can do for you? Thank you.
Hey, Jim.
Hey, Jim. Now, Bernie, you haven't seen this, but other people have, and, uh... That's all, it's all flopping until you get down to here. And this is, uh, it changes. This is from, Emily has written. Yeah, this for Sullivan.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay, and, and, you know, the trim color and the... And then, uh, he's submitted a monocyte plan, which Pete has reviewed and finds to be in order.
I think that was mentioned in...
Honor, are you on or you want to vote in correspondence?
Excellent.
Okay. Now, Diane, do we need to take our copies of this thing out of the, take your, first thing, take your copy out of your packet.
Excuse me, can you take that discussion outside?
Put it away, please.
We're back on the, back on the air. Thank you.
Take your, what's the Fourth Amendment? Do you have the Fourth Amendment, Ed? This in your packet.
Yes, yeah.
Do you, does Bernie have a packet?
I didn't plan on coming tonight.
I sent you us to your house.
All right.
Yeah, but I...
Okay, so we've got three copies of this special permit. Yes.
Yes.
All right. Now, we've closed the hearing. This is a... This is a Fourth Amendment to special permit and to site plan approval for planned unit development of 36 Central Avenue, Orenmore Enterprises LLC and Brinkham Construction Company, Inc., applicant. We discussed this earlier and found the amendment to be in order. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to special permit and to site plan approval.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. The discussion has actually occurred.
I think we've had our discussions.
And the reason it's occurred, we had the discussion before Mr. Lynch got here and realized that we needed four votes. So, we were going to defer it to a special meeting, but we're able to do it tonight. All in favor? Aye. Four in favor. Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's four to nothing. We will now sign the approval in three copies.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This does not in any way lessen the responsibility of Mr. Sullivan to provide notice to the neighborhood?
This does not, in fact, that obligation remains, and I believe, Mr...
Three and blow.
I believe Mr. Sullivan understands that.
Yes, I do.
We believed he understood last time.
Earlier this morning, could I have that place?
Blue?
No.
Mine?
Yes.
Now yours.
No longer.
No baseball tonight, no hockey tonight, no nothing?
No Red Sox tonight?
They play this afternoon. 14 to 1 up, again.
14 to 2, the day before.
14 to 1 today. Crawford, 4 for 4, again.
Really?
Yeah. Two days in a row.
I'll sign.
You can sign on line two. And then, Bill, tomorrow, you will file this with the town clerk. Diane?
Diane will.
Tomorrow.
I'd just like to say that since this PUD, this garden-style building worked out so well, you know, maybe the planning board might want to consider a similar PUD for townhouses in this community. It's been at least 40 years since any new townhouses have been built in the community, and it may be time to consider some zoning that would allow some new construction to be started.
And I think that this is something that we're going to have to put on our agenda, Paul, but when we do put it on the agenda...
He can write it.
You are going to be, you will, we will ask you for your ideas, because it isn't, it's, it's ideas like this that need to be discussed. Ed?
In fact, I suggested to Mr. Sullivan, something along those lines for property he owns on Pleasant Street, the sort of Poodma idea.
No, I thought it was a good idea. I just thought the circumstances were...
That was the right spot, Chris, too. That was the right spot.
All right. So, we will, we will, congratulations on your project. We look forward to it being completed.
Fully occupied.
And fully occupied, and...
Thank you.
Are you going to be back to us again?
On this project? No more changes?
An use issue or anything?
Oh, it's still up in the, I don't know, I'm not sure if this is going to happen down.
All right. Now, we've had the town planners report, yes?
I move we adjourn.
Do we have a second? We can stand.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Productive meeting, huh?